What's been going on, so they're just figuring out all the nuts and bolts.
On the neighborhood, you know, we have is open like so you can see these art movies.
We can't make it. Because if you don't.
They're serious consequences.
Yeah, that's been great. But he, he. And how it turns out a bunch of people go get your food. You know, the whole. Yeah.
I would like to call the December 10th meeting of the County Board to order. Rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. A brief moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call showed 20 supervisors present. Move on to item number approval of the agenda. And a motion for approval.
A little more moves.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Discussion. Agenda is approved unanimously. Item five is members of the public wishing to be heard. And present we have done. And before we move on with the meeting, I would like to have a, have a brief pause here also. I would like to, I would like to ask our deputy court counsel, Jim Sherman, to come forward,
Thank you for being here. As you've probably received note notice about a week or so ago, Jim announced his retirement. And it took a lot of effort to convince him to come because he's, he's not one that wants accolades or anything. But someone who has served here for 27 years, he was our original court counsel, I think back in January of 1998 is when he fired. So I believe the, the job of court counsel and how that was constructed, basically, he's, he's developed along the way. And I, I've had interactions with him and known the things he does and it's just, it's just very impressive. But other than just me, what I, what I did the other day was try to go around and have three, three main places and just get input. And I'd like to share some with you. So first with our court counsel, Todd Pauls, I, I went and talked to him and just asked his opinion. And obviously he worked with him a lot. And it's just like, it's just not awe, but just how, how well done everything was, how set up everything was, the amount of work that goes into actually was my opening to me of the job that even Todd does, what goes through that office? And how widespread it is? And how organized things are and how, what he inherited and how much help he's had doing that? Just nothing but praise. And then I decided I needed to go into one of the courtrooms. Well, finding one of the judges is kind of hard, but fate, fate kind of happened because they're not meant to just be sitting out in the open unless there's a case. Judge Isaacson walked in empty courtroom and there he was. And he said he had left his laptop at home. And so he was up there on the, on the bench, you know, doing things which you know with our security things and everything, that's a little bit risky and stuff. So I was surprised to see that. And as soon as I mentioned Jim's name, he, he had the same sort of optimism. When he comes into my courtroom, everything is organized. If he's citing law, if he's citing something, you know, I, I know it's correct. And he just had his passion for what he's doing with his cases and everything. It was just, just a glowing optimism, optimistic recollection of that. And just as one other, one other thing, he had a little list. He said, this is the appellate court schedules. He says, when Jim works on a case, you will never see Chippewa Falls on this, on this appellate court because appeals just don't happen because everything is done so well. So it was just a, just a glowing from, from a sitting judge, just a glowing thing of what actually happens in the courtroom. And then last but not least, most of Jim's work is up in Health and Human Services. That's his passion. His passion has been representing the children, the families, everybody involved in that. And that's just an interesting side note. My, my first interaction here is on the, on the board. He was, he was sitting in this place here and had some Robert Rules kind of things. And he's like, a couple of them just going, looking at it. I go, who is this guy? I says, why, why is he in that position? And it's fine. So I went and asked about him and all I got was just absolutely glowing. Well, his, his passion is up in this, up in the human services. Kids and the families and everything. And so it's just, okay, I get it. And, and that's, that's now where he's been able to spend most of his time. And the work he's done there, Tim Esker, I had a talk with him and, you know, because he's, and he leads the department up there. And just to share one thing, the encounter that I had, I went up an appointment for Tim at the end of the day. So I walked up to the third floor, opened the door and walk in and the hallway is blocked. People are making Christmas decorations, the staff, some of the staff members and people were there and there's Jim with them. And just seeing, seeing him in his element and not only were they were there, but he introduced me, every single one of them knew their names, knew something about them. It was just, you see him glowing and this is extra things going on. And then I had the conversation with Tim. And the same thing, you can imagine what comes out of that, what his, what's going to be missed when he's not there representing those people in human services. So I just wanted to be able to recognize him for his service. I don't have any presentation or anything because I didn't expect he's going to be heard about today. And I know the arm was twisted pretty hard and I greatly appreciate you coming and I just think we just deserve him, just great accolades for what he's done for Chippewa County who would be sorely missed.
Thank you Supervisor Hennick. No, I was not planning to come tonight. And Chuck's been trying to find me for a couple of weeks and I've not intentionally artfully dodged him, but the, if you go down the doors, you'll see these doors are decorated. And there's a pretty cool one about two doors down on the, on the other side of the hallway that you need to check out. That was, that was done this morning. It was pretty cool. But they were, no, yesterday, but they were putting their things together and Chuck came by and I tried to act like I didn't see him. And he just stood there and finally I'm like, okay, I know you've been looking for me. And it was really probably one of the first actual conversations he and I had. And the first question I asked him is, where's your next trip? And he couldn't wait to tell me about Vietnam and visiting the caves that were just discovered in the last few 10 years. And I talked to Denise Ader on the way down and said, they want me to come to the county board meeting to be recognized. And she said, just go and accept the accolades. And I talked to my wife, she said the same thing. I talked to another social worker today, said the same thing. And Tracy's been telling me this for a few weeks and Randy's been trying to talk me into it. He's right, I don't, don't generally like this kind of stuff. This is not who I am. But I came here, this, my first meeting was January 13th, 1998. It was the county board before we had an administrator to vote whether to, to create the position and hire me. They already created the position whether to hire me. And that was my first county board meeting in the old, which is now branch, branch one of the, of the courtrooms. And I sat here for, I gotta figure over 500 county board meetings. And Todd and I switched roles in 19, in 2020, right, really right before COVID. And so I've not, I don't know a lot of you. I know, I know Carrie, George has come to my office, I've talked to him and of course I know Jase and I know a few of you people, I know I'm missing some, Chuck obviously. And so most of you, you haven't worked with me. You've seen me come to a couple of closed sessions and to advocate or to take a position on something. But it's still pretty surreal that this is happening. People ask me if I'm going to miss it and I'm, no, not really. And it's, it's not, it's, it's, I, I was a DA for four years. I lost infection, I was on my own for a year and a friend of mine said there's a new position in Chippewa County. And my first response was, well, that's more political than being a DA. And I just applied on a whim. I ended up, my first interview was with like 12 people with most of them being county board supervisors. And I didn't expect this. I came here, I just, I wanted a job and I came here and it evolved and what Chuck said, court was what I was good at, I guess is the best way to put it. It was something I was adept at. And so the chip stuff was something that was natural for me. Child support was, came natural, mental commitments, all this stuff. The problem was I also had to do all this stuff. I had to learn how to be an advisor to the county board. And so since Todd and I switched almost five years ago, it's been allowed me to even spend even more time. We have a lot of very young child protective social workers. And so it's nice to work with them and to be able to mentor them. And I always tell everybody, the best part of this job is the fact that the courts, the child support, the human services, they all appreciate me. And if everybody's had a job and you feel appreciated, that means more than anything. And just when people legitimately appreciate the work that you do, means more than anything. This is a very stressful job. On the other hand, I've seen a lot of really depressing things in, in this job. And the best analogy I get is I used to be able to compartmentalize everything, all this, all the crap that I would see. And now the compartment's full, it's filling over. I lose my, my temper pretty quickly. And you may have seen that at the last meeting, it wasn't intentional, but it's just, my patience is, is not what it used to be. So I think it's time to move on. We did hire Brady, Joel's nephew, Joel Sidletz, wherever you are, your nephew. He's going to do a really good job. He's very adept in court and he's a willing leader, a loser, leader, learner. He's a very willing learner. And, and then they'll fill my position. I'm sure they'll find somebody that'll be very qualified. But it has been a pleasure. I, I never expected to be doing this for 27 years. It just wasn't, I just was, it's just something I grew into. And like I said, it's very nice to be appreciated. And I appreciate Chuck for being as insistent as he was because I was not going to come tonight. But thank you and good luck. You guys, I think you have a long agenda, so I'll cut myself short now. I'm a lawyer, so I could go on for hours, but I won't. Anyway, I wish you all the best. Thank you. I appreciate it and thank you Chuck and everybody else. Adieu.
Okay, move on to the consent agenda. I'll enter a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Later approves this motion. Pressure on a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions? Okay, if not, then we'll call a vote for the consent agenda. Item seven is reports. County Administrator Review and Update. Update on the status of EMS services in Chippewa County.
Thanks Chair. My name's Randy Schultz, I'm the Chippewa County Administrator. I wanted to just give the board an update from the memo I sent out on November 26th. Since HSHS left, we've been having conversations about EMS and the services and how they're being provided and can they continue to be provided in the same mechanism that they're currently using? The EMS organization's been talking about this long before I got involved. They asked me to come talk to, at one of their meetings, really worked with Ron Patton, who's our coroner, but he's also the chair or chief of that organization. And really the conversation, there's really two things to think about, about EMS. You can have a countywide system or you can have them run independently by municipalities. Statutorily, it's a municipality responsibility to provide EMS service. It's not the county's responsibility. But the big difference is if it's a countywide EMS service, it's exempt from levy limits, which means it's just like our bridge aid, our library aid, it's not under the levy limits that we're currently under, which is zero or in that new construction. So when I was in Lincoln County, we had EMS countywide, ran that system. It was, we had two contracts essentially. Came here, I was like, where's my EMS budget? Oh, that's, so it's a lot easier not having it countywide for the administrator part. But the system of volunteers and having these little municipalities run EMS is just not going to be sustainable. Everybody says it, any reports you see, any studies you see talks about the same thing. So I went to the meeting and just really wanted to just advocate that the county's here to listen. I mean, we're not here to try and take over EMS. I wouldn't advise that. Obviously, I'm not going to be here, but there are different hybrid systems and things you can do that can help fund some of those municipalities without the county taking over their systems. And we're just starting those conversations. And the way we really started that is to have UW Extension put together a survey and send them out to all the EMS groups. And then they're going to have that meeting that we sent you the information about that. I would definitely have you really advise that you guys go to that and get some more information. I have no idea where this is going to go or, you know, how this is all going to end up. There are some counties that are doing some pretty creative things with EMS. Bayfield County is currently giving out grants essentially to each EMS system. And then it's a certain dollar amount. And then they are allowed to use that for whatever purpose they need. So I just see this as, it's kind of ironic, I was talking to Lori and Tracy probably two weeks before Ron came and talked to us and said, you know, there's something that's got to be done. I just know the system's not going to be able to hold up on it. I mean, it was, it was tough before they left, it's tougher now. And real, the big reason is a lot of them are volunteers. Before they had to take an hour run, they would get in, get out. Now they're talking four, five hours. And we were hearing people going to Wausau, going to La Crosse, the Twin Cities, all over. So it's definitely the good news last night, if you guys were at that meeting, that, you know, the cooperatives trying to bring in to start up the hospital here and, and that will definitely help. But EMS issue's not going away. There's been counties up north that the townships didn't have EMS service for a short period of time. And literally they would call and say, get yourself to the hospital. So obviously we're not in that state, but it all kind of happens, it always happens in the small counties first. If you guys ever want to see trends in the county world, look at the small counties, see what they're going through. And eventually it's going to get to all the counties. It's just a matter of the way things work. But, so I just wanted to give you update, let you know that there are conversations, I haven't promised anything to anybody, just really trying to be a, someone, a resource and be available if, if there's anything they want to do moving forward. This is something the whole community is going to have to solve. It's not going to be one entity or the county even. The only other thing I'd like to add is the state is looking at, from my understanding, for the next budget cycle, and I don't know if it's going to be in the budget or if it's going to be standalone bills, where municipalities are exempt from the levy limits. That's what I think, for me, that's the solution. Not sure why counties are and municipalities aren't. And then, then the municipalities would just deal with what they have to deal with. But, so that's my report and just want to make sure you guys are in the loop and weren't hearing stuff that I was meeting with, you know, groups and you weren't aware of it. So is there any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Thank you Randy. And be on to the department reports with the financial update. Lori?
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so we'll be pretty quick tonight, just because I know you have a very full agenda. So what we're really looking for right now is we're looking for revenues that are below 75% and expenses above 75%. Oh, sorry, I went too far. The first one is general county. That one is where we get the state shared revenues. We did actually receive the state shared revenues, which arrived on November 20th. So we're good there. The county clerk, we always show her over because the library allocation is done in January. And the county treasurer, I'm not going to talk about everyone tonight because you can see on the other screen, but the county treasurer, they're really having great rates for the interest rates. And for September, it was 5.23%. And if you recall in June, it was 5.42%. Special revenue funds. It just says, I've always talked about public health, ADRC and human services, they'll get their revenues a month later through this aid system. Jail assessment, they're actually, their fees, the quarterly fees are a little behind of where we'd want to be. We want to see revenues about 75% and they're at 70.8. But then you'll see that expenses are at 87%. And it's because they paid some annual maintenance during the quarter. So it shows that it's higher. Land records, there is a shortfall in revenues and that's really fully due to the housing market and economy, similar to the register of deeds has a shortfall of revenue too. First sales tax. So you'll notice that we have only received July so far this year because we always have a two-month lag. And on the expense side, the, all the expenses are allocated at the beginning of the year, so 100% is allocated out right away. Oops, too fast. The opioid account for 2024, those are the detailed revenues over on the left-hand side. And then the expenses are what were for approved, they were budgeted for the approved programs and projects, what we've spent this year to date. And then we have American Rescue Act, Rescue Plan Act funds. All the 2024 listed or revenue listed is only interest revenues. And then our year-to-date expenses are over on the right-hand side for the different In February, we'll be bringing forward a presentation where the final, looking at all of the different projects that were part of ARPA, so you can look at over the whole three-year scan or the whole two to three-year timeframe. Debt service, this always shows our annual debt payments for the year. And at the end of this year, our outstanding principal will be $10,380,000. That includes the $3 million that we had bonded for in September. And there is no capital project funds for us this year. Internal service funds, the self-funded health insurance is having a loss for the year so far. The revenues are right about where we would expect them to be, but the expenses are high because we have some really high claims. This year we have a lot more claimants that are reaching, are considered high claims than normal. The last one that we'll talk about is the self-funded liability insurance. The revenues are short because the annual allocation is done in, was done in October. And the expenses are on the higher side due to the fact that the annual women premiums were paid in January. And here on the last one is our enterprise and trust agency funds. So the land development fund, this is where the Lake Wisota Business Park properties that we have would be. We haven't sold any properties yet this year. And for expenses, this includes the $70,000, which was contributed to the Chippewa Valley Health Cooperative per resolution 2924. And also the other expenses that are in there are, remember, we've been working with a firm looking at a possible new business park. I'm, are you any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Lori? Supervisor Guthan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question, having had the meeting late yesterday afternoon, early evening with the healthcare cooperative and the whole thing about wanting to bring businesses back into the community with the self-funded insurance, are we sending or do, how does that work? Or are our employees going outside the region to access their healthcare? Is this something that we might end up pulling back if so?
Yeah, I really think that right now, we have a lot of programs in place with our self-funded health insurance program where we, they call it Aletheus is the program that we use where if you know you have some kind of like a knee surgery or something, you call them and they actually suggest to you where to go for a high quality and lower cost place. So you're right, we are actually, a lot of people are going out of the area and hopefully that would come back. So then hopefully we would, you know, still be able to save money for our employees. Very good question.
Any more questions? Supervisor Kelly?
Thank you Chair. I guess to piggyback off of Pam, with, in regards to the morgue, I guess, because the 700, 700,000, right? How's that going to play, I guess, with St. Joe's potentially opening back up?
Yeah, 600,000 we got earmarked. I'm not sure. We did talk about it. I had a meeting with them before the meeting last night in the afternoon, so that's when I kind of found out about everything. So yeah, it's definitely something we've talked about. We can, they said we could use the morgue as it opens up. And then I talked about the earmark money, we have 600,000 that can get reallocated for some purpose for them, as long as we get the use of the morgue, that's really what we're after. So yep, that's a great point. That's something we're definitely talking about and seeing if there's something we can do with that.
Okay, seeing no more questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have an update on the county administrator recruitment?
All right, good evening. In your packet is a memo. And so I thought I'd just kind of explain some of the highlights. As you know, our county administrator's last day is going to be March 7th. And so immediately upon his notice, we sent out five RFPs, requests for proposals to different recruiters. We received three proposals from MRA, MGT and Public Administration Associates. And then we met with the executive committee and they reviewed those and decided to go with PAA. So it's Public Administration Associates. And that was based on their references across the state. It was based on their proposal. Their proposal was very specific to Chippewa County versus kind of just a boilerplate proposal and also based on their timeline. They were able to kind of meet the timeline. We really feel like this is an aggressive schedule, so it's also attached, kind of a possible schedule. What we'd like you to also remember is to put these dates on your calendar. The county board, we really want you to be involved, the executive committee really wants you to be involved. Similar to the recruitment for Randy, there'll be an opportunity for you to do a meet and greet, which is on the evening right now of February 18th. We don't have a location yet, but it would be that evening and it'd be set up so that you would have an opportunity to meet all the candidates. And then hopefully immediately following, having the candidates exit and then you providing feedback to the executive committee. Day two, during the executive committee interviews, I believe Chuck would be definitely welcome to people sitting in. The decision and the, the interview process will be run through PAA and the executive committee. And then you would be welcome to stay for the deliberation to discuss who the final candidates are. So you can be as involved in the process as you wish. But if you could keep the February 18th and 19th, or February 18th and 19th on your calendars. And then that schedule has some other tentative dates of when the executive committee will meet with PAA. One of those dates is next Tuesday to look at the marketing brochure because immediately following next week, if, if everybody approves that brochure, they will start advertising. And so you can start to share that with the community, with people that you think should apply. It'll, it'll go out, they'll start contacting people for, for the executive committee to be able to review those in February. Any questions?
Supervisor Gary?
So not so much a question, but I want to just talk to the board as a whole in that at any stage during this, if you have input for the executive committee, feel free to contact me for sure and probably the rest of the members with any input you would have, any questions, directions, hopes. There is a questionnaire that's coming out. And that will assist us also, but the executive committee is open to your input.
And just amplify that, you, all of you are free to attend the executive committee at any time, even whether we have closed session, a supervisor is allowed to be in anybody's, any closed session related to the supervisory thing. So there's nothing, nothing being hidden, you're all welcome to come. I can entertain how much we interact based on what's going on in the thing, but you are welcome to come and provide input always, just amplify that.
And to reiterate what Supervisor Green said, the survey reminder, I sent it out right at five o'clock. It's just in case you guys had a chance to take it before this meeting or read it right away afterwards. So you should have it in your email and hopefully easily accessible.
Supervisor Guthan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for all the work that you're doing. Some of my previous experience, I recognize that there's usually a cost for this type of service and consulting. of servicing consulting that's being done, and just wondering where those funds might be coming from?
From the county administrator's budget. Will be a gap.
So and then just as a follow-up, some of my other previous experience, and I'm just kind of thinking about last night's meeting, I've heard, you know, and I think another previous presentation that sometimes we can access state resources, too, for looking at assessments to find, you know, whoever the next leadership is, not just Randy's position, any leadership really, through like the state UW extension. And I think we might have access to those kinds of resources, and I don't know if that's something that is eligible or available here or not. And I'm just raising that as just a potential.
I've not looked into anything through UW extension.
Thank you, just curiosity.
Nobody's reached out to me since I've been here for the last 10 years, like the, for his recruitment or this one, and educated me on that. So if there was something, I'm not aware.
Previous experience, I've had in other entities, so I didn't know if that might be something of availability for us, at least sometime.
Next time I'll look into it. Hopefully there is no next.
Supervisor Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you speak to just geographically, like how wide is PAA going to be advertising for potential?
Across the entire state with assurance, and then they usually go, I mean, there's, there's people nationally. I know Randy, I can, he and I have talked, he's been recruited nationally, so it's definitely national as well.
Supervisor Kelly?
Thank you, Chair. I guess kind of a two-parter, if we don't find a replacement, where, how do we go about that? And then have we considered not having a county administrator and just letting the department heads run their departments?
So I can answer number two, no. We have not considered what that would look like. Number one is we have a policy, there's an actual policy, it was attached, if you look at the executive committee meeting, it was attached, I don't know if it was attached to this one. No, but there is a succession plan policy that helps if there's a short-term gap, what, how, how the counties and the executive committee would make those decisions and if there's a long-term gap. And they definitely talked about it at the last meeting on kind of what that would look like if we fail, you know, if there was not success. What I can tell you is John Hockamer specifically said that he's had county administrators in other municipalities reach out to him without knowing that Randy was leaving and saying if Chippewa County ever has a position available, they are interested. I know Randy's had people, so I do feel positive that we are going to fill the position and have people excited to come to this community. I just don't know how many. That's exciting.
Supervisor Sherridge?
I asked the people who are doing the search, are they looking just within the government circles or are they also looking in business circles? Maybe somebody with a business mindset coming in? What kind of pool are they pulling from?
The last time when we evaluated Randy's position, when we hired him, it was all types of professionals, not people with just in the public sector. I didn't come from the public sector either, I came from the private sector, so I believe it's going to be both.
Any more questions? Thank you. Move on to item eight, the business items. First item is resolution 46-24, resolution to support Antera LLC's PSC bead grant application.
Resolution number 46-24, resolution to formally support Antera LLC's grant application for broadband infrastructure funding from the Wisconsin Public Service Commission's Broadband Equity Access and Development Program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors by the passage of this resolution does hereby endorse and support Antera LLC as a bead program applicant and Chippewa County broadband provider and supports the construction of unserved and underserved communities in Chippewa County highlighted within the Wisconsin Public Service Commission broadband map as part of the bead program as administered by the Wisconsin Public Service Commission to make Chippewa County fully covered with broadband access as stated, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Supervisor Burgeon, motions to approve.
Take seconds.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? You know, just, just to remind you, there, there's no commitment by the county, this is for them applying for their, for their money and their bead grants, and it helps, it helps their legitimacy looking in a grant. So then now, well.
So is there any standards that we're looking at before we apply this? Is there anything they have to do or prove themselves to, to get the money or is it just a blind gift?
Brian's here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, come up front please, so we can, so we can get your audio. Thank you.
Yeah, what was your question again?
Basically, he's, the grant money.
Yep.
They're addition to it, their evaluations, we're saying, okay, this is a good ROI investment or not. What are the standards for, is it just a blind gift, we just have money to give out?
Well, it's one of those things that we've partnered with the county on other projects before on grants. I think we've closed like almost, see there's seven or nine grants around here and we're fiber to the home, so we've had success and had support from a lot of the townships and the counties itself. So I think it's just one of those things, it's, we're like the tier one because we're fiber. And I think the support that we've shown each other, I think it's just a plus and this gives us extra points on our, on our application to get that partnership with you guys. So I'm not sure exactly, you know, somebody's going to get it. So I would, I would think that, you know, you'd want the high-quality people to get it and, you know, we're considered one of them.
Any more questions? Then we'll call the vote on the resolution then. And resolution approved. Item two is resolution 47-24, resolution to support Mosaic's PSC bead grant application.
Resolution 47-24, resolution to formally support Mosaic Technologies' grant application for broadband infrastructure funding from the Wisconsin Public Service Commission's Broadband Equity Access and Development Program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors by the passage of this resolution does hereby endorse and support Mosaic Technologies as a bead program applicant and Chippewa County broadband provider and supports the construction of broadband infrastructure for the unserved and underserved communities in Chippewa County highlighted within the Wisconsin Public Service Commission broadband map as part of the bead program as administered by the Wisconsin Public Service Commission to make Chippewa County fully covered with broadband access as stated, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
Lots will approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Yeah, Deanna is here from Mosaic to give a little presentation that will help probably answer some of your questions.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deanna Westfall. I am the Public Relations Manager for Mosaic Technologies, and tonight I'd like to talk a little bit more about the bead programming that's coming up in January. Back in July, the Wisconsin PSC has, has created the guidelines and forwarded on to the NTIA at the federal level. We then have been waiting for several months to get approval on the final project units. What I'm showing you tonight is the preliminary units, but they have been approved as stated. So I know that the map will say that it's preliminary, but if we move forward, but just saying that those have been approved as stated. So this is the map of the county, and, and what you'll notice is that it truly shows that most of the county to the east side, all of those colors are individual project units. So if you see anything in green, that is one hex. If you would zoom in on that, it would show you how many actual project units are located within that green hex. I have calculated all of the IDs, so if you went out to the Public Service Commission's website and clicked on any of those colors, within each color block, it'll actually give you an ID number that will be associated with our application. The BSLs in the next column are the actual project households and businesses within that hex, okay? So in that first one, in the upper left-hand corner, the ID number and the BSL is 25. However, there are other hexes within this color-coded map that shows just one or two households or businesses passed, okay? So when we look at all of the, the area of opportunity, it really is in that eastern side of the, of the county. And Mosaic Technologies has done an assessment of providing essentially 291 estimated miles of mainline fiber with about 1,700 estimated locations. That could swell or it could be smaller depending on the final count for the project units. So with every hex color that you'll see up there will have a percentage match that the, the broadband provider must match in order to apply for that hex. Does that make sense? Okay. So we're not just looking at only the yellow area for Mosaic Technologies, we're looking at how much that match will be for each color-coded project. We're looking at the east side of the Chippewa River and down Highway 27 to the county line. When you are approving a letter of endorsement for any of the providers, what you're essentially doing on a 100-point scale, there's essentially 12 points that will be given to the broadband provider that successfully has a public meeting such as this, has meeting agenda and minutes associated with their application that highlight the presentation and what they're applying for. And then lastly, the most important part is the county's endorsement. What the endorsement says is that we are a provider that the county would like to work with. In the past, for a grant application, the county did not get a say necessarily who they were going to be able to work with. When the UW system created their Internet for All listening sessions, they did ask and had several people tell them from the county level, from municipalities and broadband providers and even residents, saying that we would love to have the opportunity to have it weighted with our say in who gets to come and provide us broadband. So this is the county's voice, the ability to tell the PSC that we would like to partner and work with Mosaic Technologies or Antera or Spectrum. You're not only looking at the three providers fighting for Chippewa County, okay? If you look at the entire state of Wisconsin, all of the providers that are filing for bead application will be competing essentially throughout the entire state. So in order to get access for Chippewa County, you really do need to get as many providers as possible wanting to work with you to support getting internet access for those remaining colors on your map. Anyone who doesn't get, in my opinion, the engagement 12 points will probably miss out on bead funding. The billion dollars will not support the entire state to get everyone access, so we're really fighting for Chippewa County and creating that narrative that it is most necessary for you to be able to get everyone in rural northwestern Wisconsin. Internet for All bead broadband equity access and deployment. So the program is conducted by the Public Service Commission, but also supported by the NTIA at the federal level. The NTIA is providing the billion dollars, but then also approving the guidelines and how the PSC will be presenting the funding mechanism to the rest of the providers. Internet for All grants are, are set out to address the critical gaps in infrastructure for broadband. If you look in the lower left-hand or right-hand corner, excuse me, the unserved households and businesses lacking 25 by 3 is the criteria. For underserved households, it's anything 100 by 20. With Mosaic Technologies, we start out with 100 by 100 symmetrical speeds at 6495, just to keep that in perspective. And it's scalable up to 10 gigs, what we're putting into the ground at this time. That is essentially what the west and east coast are putting out there for their, for their constituents right now. So we know that the technology is future-proof, as, as we call it in the industry, with redundancy and reliability at 99.999%, okay? There will be fiber cuts and then we will replace that and repair that and take care of that through splicing and testing. Lastly, I just want to let you know that it is imperative once more, we know the eligible areas at this time, we do know that the program requires at least that 100 by 20 to get that underserved household served. And the letter of intention was due on October 1st, so I invite anyone to go out to the PSC, you can see who is currently looking at working with Chippewa County in the letter of intent. Mosaic Technologies anticipates that we are opening the grants by the PSC mid-January. I think it'll be specifically January 13th, but we always know that there could be delays. As part of that 100 points once more, the 12 points includes that letter of engagement and that's what we're here for tonight, to be endorsed by Chippewa County. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, you forgot the introduction of who you are because most of the supervisors don't know your company. If you just give a quick two-minute pitch on who you are as a company.
Sure, as a company, Mosaic Technologies is a broadband provider, but we also have four companies under our umbrella. We start with M-Tech Instruction to actually put the utility fiber in the ground. We work with municipalities and government contracts outside of our company and we are able to help facilitate and offset that cost associated with whenever there's grants, it seems like there's a supply and demand moment there. So we are able to not only create a better quality working relationship with our contractors, but also offset that cost for that supply and labor. Home Tech by Mosaic is out of Eau Claire, and that is really the Wi-Fi products and services enabled on your internet service. So that is anything from home automation, design work, your audio and entertainment, home theater systems, indoor/outdoor cameras, your cameras, your glass breaks, your contact sensors, you're really full-on security systems we offer, both for commercial and residential. And then most recently in 2024, we have acquired protectors out of Eau Claire. That's really your managed network, IT support and, and services to really expand not only our expertise, but our portfolio of products and services. So anything that we put in the ground for construction, we're able to provide you best-in-class services on our broadband, then also our products and services outside of our network you can have at any time at any of our locations in the headquarters of Cameron or down in Eau Claire.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Supervisor Kelly?
Thank you, Chair. Can we go back to the map real quick?
Yeah.
So you have roughly 291 miles, you're saying? How many houses do you think you get done in a year, I guess, or a season?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. For bead, we anticipate with applications opening in 2025, they'll be awarded and activated by 2026. We have to have everything completed in the ground and active no later than 2030. So given the size and scope of roughly So given the size and scope of roughly 1,700 estimated locations, I am assuming that we'll have good weather, and I'm assuming that winter won't be seven months long, and that the glacier deposits won't break our equipment, we will meet that deadline of 2030 or less.
Okay. Any more questions? Supervisor Kirby?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was kind of curious, you're talking about future-proofing when you're laying the cable in, like, how far into the future are we talking? We're talking 20 years, 50 years, beyond? Is there any estimate, if you're mirroring what's happening on the coast, then are they experiencing, like, faster gobbling up of this bandwidth? Or what kind of expectations do you have?
Sure. So that would be more of an engineering and design question. However, I do know that the fiber optics that we're laying in the ground is really future-proof because of how it's laid in the ground. The mechanisms for rodent-proofing and the fact that we're using glass over cable, the future-proofing part of it is really the technology at the central office level or at the home. So that technology, that as it continues to develop, we will continue to upgrade at our central office level.
In laying the cabling, are you laying multiple cables for, again, future, assuming population growth?
We are laying enough for growth, because with us, the fiber optic is dedicated lines to your door. So we do take into account, you know, future developments and how many counts would need to be required in specific areas that have vacant properties.
Good. Thank you.
Yes.
Supervisor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When you lay this fiber optic in the ground...
Mm-hmm.
Future technology advances a lot...
Yes.
Will that, which is laid, accommodate that, or do we have to redo that in the future?
We believe that what we're putting in the ground today will accommodate the transport of the actual system. What will probably need to be upgraded is at the central office, think of your computers or your data, right? You have to think about, at the central office level, how many more gigs you'll need in the future. So that's the part that is necessary. But the actual mode of transportation, a road is a road is a road, and as long as we look at the counts that go into that road, we know that it'll be able to handle the traffic.
And are you required a specific number of years to maintain this?
I don't believe we are required to maintain our lines, but that is just part of what we do as a cooperative. We've been a cooperative since 1957, serving the Chippewa, Barren, Dunn Counties as a Barton, and we take that history and continue to not only maintain, but update and expand our fiber network.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll then call the vote then on Resolution 47-24, to support Mosaic's grant application. Resolution to support your application has been approved. Thank you. Item 3, Resolution 48-24, Resolution to support Charter Communications' PSC-B grant application.
Resolution 48-24, Resolution to formally support Charter Communications' grant application for broadband infrastructure funding from the Wisconsin Public Service Commission's Broadband Equity Access and Development Program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors, by the passage of this resolution, does hereby endorse and support Spectrum Mid-America LLC, managed by Charter Communications, Inc. as a BEAD program applicant and Chippewa County broadband provider, and supports the construction of broadband infrastructure for unserved and underserved communities in Chippewa County, highlighted within the Wisconsin Public Service Commission broadband map as administered by the Wisconsin Public Service Commission to make Chippewa County fully covered with broadband access.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
BLM move. Take seconds.
Motion in a second.
Yeah, I don't believe Charter's here tonight. They're on the executive committee meeting by phone. I don't know if Charlie's got anything to add to this project or anything. Charlie does not, since it's a first. He'll be up next. So I really don't have any other information.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Okay, then I will call a vote on Resolution 48-24. Under 40, Resolution 49-24, Resolution to express support and appreciation for the BEAD Committee.
Resolution number 49-24, Resolution to express support and appreciation for the work of the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby express its appreciation to and support of the Chippewa County Ad-Hoc Broadband Committee members for all of the work that they have done for the residents of Chippewa County to improve broadband access across the county, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
I'm going to have Charlie come up and explain this and maybe just give a little
more history. He was dealing with broadband way before I even came to Chippewa County, so he's got good history on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Randy. We've been on a journey for 10 years to get high-speed Internet to Chippewa County. The supervisors saw it was important. You remember when you were on the Economic Development Committee. What is important is you saw the map that showed, our population is roughly 60,000, but you saw in the map, it's 2,000 people in Chippewa County are not served. So the BEAD program is our attempt to get those 2,000 people served, and it takes a committee to do that. And the county staff employees need to be congratulated with IT glory, everybody on that list countless times, because this is the end result. But we had to get the word out for citizens in Chippewa County to test. We had to file complaints, so that's a strong word, but we had to, you know, get the maps and advocate for Chippewa. We had to have town hall meetings and educate the importance of broadband. We've just been doing that over the years, and as it's starting to, technically, when you have, after Mosaic, which is all local, we had meetings with our local cooperatives as well, Blumer Telephone, 2448, Intera, Citizens, Mosaic, Charter, Spectrum, all of them together to get that, it took a team. So this resolution is just really thanking those individuals, especially the county staff and the IT, for all the hard work they did. And the supervisors' leadership, seeing this 10 years ago, we're finally seeing the end results, and congratulations.
Any questions or comments? A lot of hard work went into this, so this is worth documenting and thanking. So again, I'll call the vote on Resolution. Resolution 49-24 is approved. Resolution 50-24, Resolution to approve further security measures for Hybrid Option 4.
Resolution 50-24, Resolution to approve further implementation of additional security measures for the Chippewa County Courthouse, read by title only.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Later moves.
Okay, your motion in a second.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just walk through the memo, and then Tracy will call up different documents as I go through it, mostly the map. But first, just wanted to talk about, remind everybody, the motion that the county board made to move forward with Hybrid Option 4. So that's what our directions were. So since then, we did enhance some security measures since June of 2024. So we had security upgrades, physical barriers, and cameras have been integrated into the Land Conservation Force Management and Register and Proweight Department remodel project. Both projects are now complete per Resolution 1624, which created the new jailer 2 position. We've hired a second courthouse security officer, and that is up and running with the office and all the technology installed. We installed FOB access on numerous doors throughout the courthouse and other county facilities. We are currently in the process of adding FOB, Redes, Secure access to employees' breakrooms in the courthouse. And then a new ordinance has been drafted to address security of the court building. The ordinance defines what constitutes a weapon, which you think would be easy, but is not, Judge Elaine and Court Counsel worked on that, and that will be coming through the process. And then the security enhancements, recommendations, and this is where Tracy will kind of go back and forth with the map that's in your packet too. So entrance 6, that's the one near human resources. Employees in the public will no longer be allowed to use these doors for routine entrance and exit from the building. Signage will be installed to direct employees in the public that is an emergency exit only. Alarm monitoring with Crash Bar will be installed to notify security personnel if someone exits. Only law enforcement and facilities and park staff will be allowed to enter and exit this door for emergencies and maintenance purposes. Use the FOB access by these individuals will disengage the alarm for the exit, and the cost estimate for that's about 10 grand. One of the reasons that we talked about this, obviously, several times, is we're trying to get the staff or in the public to go past the security office, which is located right there. So by closing that off, it, I think, does the least amount of inconvenience for the public and our staff because of the two door entrances, one to the north and then the cul-de-sac, obviously. So that's a recommendation with that one. So entrance number 3, near Public Health, this is the main handicap entrance to the courthouse. This one gets a little complicated, there's a couple doors there. So the stairwell door, B1, from the first floor hallway, the stairwell door will be closed to the public, so they cannot immediately go upstairs or downstairs, which will make it easier for the courthouse security officer to monitor the public entering the building, same reason as closing the first door. FOB access will be installed on this door, so employees can enter and exit this door. Signage will be installed on the first floor, indicating employee use only. Then fire door exit only, B2, that's the, currently the door is used for exit only. There is no alarm, no key fob, and no door handle on the outside. This will be, will now be designated as emergency exit only. Equipped with an alarm, the new steel doors with no windows will be installed to increase security. Cost estimates for entrance number 3, fire door, exit only, B2, currently estimated $20,000. Door B1, B2, current quote for installation of FOB readers, enter/exit for door B1, and installation of alarm monitoring with Crash Bar for door 2, $18,000. And then we'll have to put some stairwell signage. Signage will be installed on the second floor, third floor, and the lower levels for anyone trying to enter the stairwell, signage will indicate emergency exit only. Again, we have to keep a lot of this stuff open and available to exit for life safety issues. So entrance number 2, by the cul-de-sac, this is located inside the stairwell by the cul-de-sac. Currently, these doors are used for exit only. Doors have windows, no FOB access, and no alarm. New steel doors without windows and no door handles on the outside will be installed. Alarm monitoring with Crash Bars will be installed along with signage indicating that it is an emergency exit only. Cost estimate, again, about $20,000. That's really going to mirror that entrance that we just talked about. And then cameras, one of the things we talked about during this process was using technology, so we don't need to put so much money into the infrastructure or need additional security. So convert 64 cameras to facial recognition capacity by installing software with a 10-year service plan. The system will also allow authorized users to update photos for persons of interest to alert law enforcement if they are detected in our building. This will come in handy for law enforcement, but we also have a mechanism if we have citizens or that cause problems, they can fill out, or employees can fill out a form that goes to the sheriff's department. They decide what should be utilized or what safety precautions could be used. If one of them is that they shouldn't enter the building without escort or some other reason, they could download that photo into that, and we'd be aware of that. Current security officers utilized, we were able to utilize the system for a few days. They were very appreciative of having that. They can do a lot of work by watching their cameras and seeing where people are going, and the technology of that's pretty amazing, actually. To me, it does facial erection, or recognition, but it also, to me, it really shows the person, you don't have to see their face after they recognize them, they can tell by their gait, which is very interesting to me. Install one additional camera in the hallway by entrance number 3 for better visibility. Install one additional camera on second floor and the stairwell on the east end of the building by Eastern Street, near Public Health. Then install two additional cameras on first floor and second floor and stairwell for entrance 2 by the cul-de-sac. Cost estimate for that, $66,000. The reason for additional cameras, when our cameras were set up, they obviously weren't intended for this purpose, so we need to get a little closer on some of those, for technology to work. And then pole cords, duress alarms. We currently have about four different types of pole cords, which is making it confusing for dispatch and officers when responding to duress calls. The current system is also at capacity, so we cannot add to the system. The recommendation is to upgrade the entire system, add hardware, and increase the zones from 30 to 120 capacity, which gives us room to grow in the future. Note that the new door alarm monitoring that we've talked about being installed would send a notice to both courthouse security officer and dispatch when activated. It will also integrate into the new duress alarm system when emergency exits are activated. So cost estimate for that is between $18,000 and $20,000. So if you looked at the fiscal impact for this resolution, it's estimated between $152,000 and $154,000. And our CIP request, we put in $750,000, because we didn't know what the county board decisions were going to be, and that had also, we talked about, we need to do enhanced security in the DOA suite. There is absolutely no security, and at some point, that's going to have to get updated. So that's a recommendation. The group that put this together was law enforcement, obviously, IT facilities, I was there. So we, the judges were there, so we all came together, and this is the recommendation we brought forward. So any questions?
Supervisor Shubridge?
So have we had a situation where a negative situation happened, would this change would have prevented it?
I'm not sure. We've had negative situations, for sure. Yep. And we've had situations where the officers couldn't find the person, which is very disconcerning. If you've got somebody in the building that they're looking for and they can't find them, this definitely would help that. So yeah, I'd say it would have prevented, you know, that concern.
Any more questions? Thank you, Randy. Okay, I will call the vote then on Resolution 50-24. Resolution 50-24 is approved. Under Resolution 51-24, Resolution to authorize the sale of the firearms range.
Resolution number 51-24, Resolution authorizing the sale of the Chippewa County Public Firearms Range property. Now therefore be it resolved, the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize the county administrator to proceed with the sale of the former Public Firearms Range property, and be it further resolved that the county administrators directly obtain an appraisal to determine the current market value of the property, use the appraised value as the minimum sale price, and conduct a sealed bid bidding process for the sale of the property, and be it further resolved that the Facilities and Parks Committee is authorized to oversee the bidding process, including determining the most appropriate bid and forward a resolution to the county board to complete the sale of the property, forwarded to the county board by the Facilities and Parks Committee.
Have a motion to approve.
Later, seconds.
We have a motion in a second to approve.
Obviously, we've had lots of conversations about this, and the clerk just talked about, you know, the important parts and how it'd be carried out. We did... We did get the letter from the DNR. We put it in the packet to show that. I did have a conversation with Supervisor Romar, who's the chair of the Facilities and Park and a real estate, realtor, and suggested doing a map, a survey, certified survey map, and we did that, and I'm glad we did, because we are going to have to get a couple of quick claim deeds with landowners, but we think that shouldn't be a problem. So once that's completed, we'll get the cost estimate and then start the process.
Any questions? I will call the vote, then, on Resolution 51-24. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Resolution 52-24, resolution to approve the 2025 to 27 ADRC plan.
Resolution number 52-24, resolution to approve the 2025 to 2027 Plan of the Aging and Disability Resource Center. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby approve the attached 2025 to 2027 Aging and Disability Resource Center Plan forwarded to the county board by the Health and Human Services Board.
For a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Hi, Brenda Shire, the ADRC manager, over the plan. Brenda?
ADRC, we're an organization that assists and empowers our consumers to secure the services needed to help them remain independent, and we've developed a three-year aging plan. This is a requirement from GUAR, which is the Greater Wisconsin Agency on Aging Resources. They provide us with state and federal funding for the programs and services that we provide. It is a 44-page plan. It's similar to the previous plan that was approved in 2021. We followed a process of surveying our community through online mailed and in-person surveys, and then we reviewed those results along with employee input, input from our ADRC board and other sources of information. We've developed four goals in the three-year plan, so we'll just do a high-level view of those. They're on page 14 to 18 on the report, or otherwise, they start on page 88 of the electronic board packet. I don't know if we can look at those or not. And if not, that's okay. I'll just review the four goals. The first one is to increase the number of annual power of attorney workshops from four to six to enhance community awareness and preparation, promoting the ability of consumers to empower others to advocate on their behalf when they cannot advocate for themselves. This is a very popular workshop that we've held. We offered it in collaboration with adult protective services as well. Our next strategy or goal is to establish enhanced partnerships to fulfill the VADER, which is the Bureau of Aging and Disability Resources quarterly nutrition education requirement. The key word in that is partnership. So we're really partnering with others to provide nutrition information in the community, which is a good thing. Our third goal is that by 2027, we will ensure health promotion programming equitably serves Chippewa County residents, especially those from underserved and vulnerable populations, learning who they are and how to best serve them. And last, but not least, is, the last goal is by 2027, expand resources available for non-professional caregivers to better prepare them for the skills necessary to provide support. We would do that with information about basic care techniques, health and safety, and/or communication skills, providing videos for people as well to learn from. So those are the four goals we developed with community input. A public forum was held to receive input. The goals were approved at the ADRC board meeting November 14th and at the Health and Human Services Board meeting November 21st, and now we bring them to you. Any questions that you have?
Are there any questions? Okay. Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll call the vote for Resolution 52-24. Resolution is approved. Resolution 53-24, resolution to express support for an inpatient psychiatric facility.
Resolution number 53-24, resolution to formally support the creation of an inpatient psychiatric treatment facility in northern Wisconsin. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby urge the state legislature and the governor to provide funding either for another state facility or subsidies for private, not-for-profit organizations to establish an inpatient psychiatric facility to serve the counties of northern Wisconsin. And be it further resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors encourages other counties in northern Wisconsin to pass resolutions of support for this initiative and take other action to address the needs of our citizens. And be it further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send this resolution to the governor, state legislators, the Wisconsin Counties Association, and the clerks of other northern Wisconsin counties, forwarded to the county board by the Health and Human Services Board.
Look for a motion to approve.
This motion is, it kind of came to light even more with the closing of HSHS and the loss of all those inpatient psych beds. This was actually started by Polk County, who is one of those counties that experiences even more of a lack of the inpatient psych being over in that on the far western edge. So for law enforcement heading over to Winnebago, it's probably an extra couple hours, two hours that they tack on to the already four hours. So this is something, like I said, that we want to bring to light to legislators to let them know of our plight in western Wisconsin. In fact, it's an issue across Wisconsin, but more so here in western Wisconsin.
Any questions? Yeah, Supervisor Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regard to the resolution being sent to the governor, state legislators, Wisconsin County Association of Clerks, are there other times that resolutions are shared with other organizations and are thinking about the Wisconsin Association of Local Health Departments and Boards, who oftentimes will also advocate for these kinds of things as well, or just wondering, is that pretty much standard language, and that would be all that we'd want to do? And/or are there other organizations we could suggest?
That's a good question. I don't know if we've ever shared.
I mean, usually, that's kind of the list.
Okay. And I'm fine with that. I'm just thinking that there's other organizations that would definitely be supportive of this that would be outside of just specific county government, too.
And WIXA is behind this 100% too, and I know they reach out to a lot of different organizations as well. WIXA is Wisconsin County Human Services Association. It's the organization that represents us.
Just food for thought for another.
Yeah, good idea.
Supervisor Schubert.
Are you looking for one main facility or multiple cities? Because you're mentioning there's multiple counties. Or are you just looking for the money for right now?
This is just the initial stages, and I don't think there's been a whole lot of thought going, we'll take whatever type of inpatient facilities that can, that we could have. Those are all good questions, which we'll do at this point. But we'd like it located in western Wisconsin, if possible.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you. We will call the vote on Resolution 53-24. Resolution 53-24 is approved. Thank you. Resolution 54-24, resolution to support state funding of mental health services.
Resolution 54-24, resolution to support full funding of the crisis and community support programs by the state of Wisconsin. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby request that the state of Wisconsin, in its 2025 to 27 state biennial budget, provide state general purpose revenue funding to cover the full non-federal share of community support program and crisis services, and be it further resolved that the Chippewa County clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution to the governor of the state of Wisconsin, Wisconsin state legislators that represent Chippewa County, and the Wisconsin County Association, forwarded to the county board by the Health and Human Services Board.
Look for a motion to approve.
Five seconds.
Thank you. This is a motion that we actually had come up about four years, two years ago, three years ago with the last biennial budget. We ask that this be passed as well. This will have a substantial impact on our budget, and we'd have approximately over $400,000 to reinvest in other areas. Comprehensive community services is already fully funded by the state. These are programs that we're mandated by the state to provide. We're asking for them to provide that funding for us to be able to provide it in a manner we'd like to be able to. With the community support program, we have a waiting list right now as well. And like I said, crisis is just, save us about $120,000. So we would just like your support and requesting, I know in the last budget, they said it was the year of mental health, the budget of mental health. However, these two items were kicked for whatever reason. So we just want to continue to bring attention and on these, on these two items with the governor, with the legislators as well.
Okay, any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote on Resolution 54-24. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, appreciate it. Close session. The county board will convene to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, paragraph one, paragraph E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business, whatever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session, reason WPP negotiations. I will look for a motion to that extent.
Supervisor Bergeron has the.
And that's the full.
Well, let Jason, sorry.
Supervisor Bergeron, motion, the county board will convene to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, paragraph one, paragraph E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, and conducting other, conducting other specific public businesses, whenever competing or bargaining reasons require a closed session, WPP negotiations, closed session, motion to include Randy Scholes, Larry Zuflaw, or Tony Holfelder, Todd Poles, Tracy Prevenness, Jackie Sadler, and all county board supervisors present.
Give me a second. Okay. So we have a motion, a second, going closed session. We all, we need to take a. Okay, please vote. The vote going closed session. All right, release, please. Okay, the vote is 18 to two, so we are on closed session. Okay.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize the commencement of contract negotiations with the union upon passage of this resolution with the goal of establishing a successor CBA that will take effect on July 1, 2025, and run through December 31, 2027. And be it further resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors hereby directs the county administrator, in collaboration with the union, to proceed with the necessary steps to facilitate negotiations in a manner that ensures a schedule and environment conducive to the parties reaching agreement in good faith on a successor CBA forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
For motion to approve.
What's moves?
You have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second discussion?
Thank you, Chair. So the WPPA Union reached out to me requesting to open up the contract, the current contract that runs through December 31, 2025, and began January 1, 2023. They wanted to just bargain wages, and I countered that request with, I'd rather open up the whole contract and look at starting the contract early, if you will, and start that on July 1 of 2025. And they were in favor of that. Really, the reasons for the county to want to do this is retention and recruitment of officers, and these also include investigators. And really, when this contract started, the conversation started to take place with this contract in 2022, actually, and then took effect in 2023. It was just before, really, the inflation hit everywhere, and we've seen dramatic increases in wages across the whole nation. But we also did a wage study and implemented that for the rest of our employees, and we have, and outside of the budget process, as far as the wages and deciding on that, had to increase certain divisions. We've done it for 911, we did it for the jail. So I think this is just another opportunity to show our employees how much we care and want the best employees we can have. So this would really do that. I did notice, I guess I didn't notice, that on line 50, it determines that it runs through December 31, 2027. I guess I would ask for a motion to that, and just have it read July 1, 2025, and as bargain through this process. Sorry about that, Jackie. I just don't want to have it in here because it's something you guys passed and then bargain something different. And I apologize, I should have caught that.
We did mark that as an amendment?
If you, if anybody's willing.
Later makes an amendment to that, that we change the ending date of the new contract to be open at this point to be negotiated.
Flynn, seconds.
Give me a motion and a second to amend the dates. Any discussion on that? Okay, we'll take the vote on the amendment.
We're gonna wait for Jackie to.
Use your third hand on that.
I don't like giving Jackie more work. She's got enough to do.
Again, this is the vote to amend the date. Amendment is in there now. It's been approved. Are there any further questions? Okay, and I will call the vote for Resolution 55-24. As amended, yes. So Resolution 55-24 is approved as amended. Amendment 13 is Ordinance 17-24, ordinance to amend section 2-350, annual budget, and section 2-361, sales and use tax of chapter 2 of the Chippewa County Code of Ordinances. The second reading. A motion to approve?
Supervisors agree.
Kelly, a second.
I think we have a motion and a second to approve.
All right. I guess I just wanted to make sure if there was any questions, because we had a lot of debate and discussion last time. So I just wanted to make sure if there's any other questions.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Very well explained, apparently. Now we'll call the vote then, Ordinance 17-24. Okay, Ordinance 17-24 is approved. Amendment 14, human resource policy manual revisions, first reading.
All right. So in your packet, there is a memo. There is like a summary, not a memo, but a summary. What, there's two agenda items. The first one is the revisions to the current HR policy manual, and there are 13 suggested revisions that are listed in that summary document. I can go through all 13. What I would say is, most of them are very minor changes or tweaks to those sections. The ones I would personally say are a little bit more significant are on page seven. There's a PTO conversion update changing when somebody gives their resignation and they have enough PTO that's above, that they have PTO in their bank. Per policy, it needs to convert unless it's less than $1,000, and the recommendation is to say that it needs to convert regardless. When I started with the county, it used to say that, and then there was a recommendation by our HR generalist who was processing the terminations, that sometimes it seemed frivolous to kind of make the change when it was a low amount of PTO. But what inadvertently happened, which sometimes happens with policies, you have unintended consequences when you make little tweaks. Now employees see that, and then they try to quick get their balance down so that they can get cash, and it's caused some problems over the last couple of years since that policy has changed. So we're requesting that that go back to just, it automatically converts to either a long-term IRA or to a medical trust, which is what it used to be set up as. And then the other section that I would kind of call your attention to would be on page 31 and 32, also related to PTO. And so again, when I point these two out, I think employees will, you know, understand or see these. And it's just updating some language on our working notice, and also updating the language on PTO that's allowed if someone gives a longer notice. We have a lot of people who retire, and it requires a 30-day or a 60-day notice, and they will come and ask a lot of questions to kind of strategize their day. We also have employees who want to give the employees, or give a longer notice. I know Randy gave a longer notice. But if they have to, if they can only use PTO 40 hours during their longer notice, that makes them stressed. And so we wanted to make sure it was clear to them in policy, even though in practice, we've told them that they only have to, they can only use 40 hours of PTO during their notice period that's required in the policy. So they have freedom to take time off as they need if they give a longer notice. So that's what we wanted to make that clear in the policy. I'm happy to answer any other questions on any of the other changes, if you have any. This is just the first reading, I think. Were we going to ask for not to have it, just because of a busy agenda, or something? I can't remember if that was a conversation. Okay.
Okay, Supervisor Shubert.
I believe this is when we're, they're changing military leave?
Yep.
Can you explain that one to me? I had a little more concerns on that one.
Yep. So military leave is governed by ERISA, and we've never had an employee who has filed, I didn't even know that this language is in the policy that allowed employees to stay on our health plan for their entire military leave, because they get, they get insurance when they go out, when they're, when they're sent abroad. And somebody was going to actually take it for the 12 months that they were gone, and they were going to have that on our expense. And somebody was going to actually take it for the twelve months that they were gone and they were going to have that on our expense. Which it makes sense because they would get all of those free HRA dollars. That's not the intent, that's not required by law. And so my recommendation is that we don't offer somebody who is, we have a current employee who is out for twelve months that we're going to pay for their health insurance. They already have health insurance through the military.
Okay, now is that also going to affect? National Guard, people who are going to be shorter time?
Nope, because of the policy, it allows them to stay on it for the thirty days. So no, it would it would not affect those individuals. Unless you're in the National Guard and are gone for twelve months. I have a son who is gone right now, he's in the National Guard, but he's gone for twelve months and so no, he wouldn't have insurance. He would have it through the military. And my son has it through the military, so he doesn't need it.
Supervisor Hennick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What about their families?
I'm not sure how how it would work. I would assume that they can be on their plan as well because they're they're abroad.
Assuming is not acceptable. You need to, you need to clarify that.
Again, it's not required by law and I do not recommend that we offer this benefit to an employee who is not going to be working for us for twelve months.
It's an honorable thing to do.
I totally agree, we have a son that's over there as well.
For you to 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 say to me that. It's not required. It kind of is. You either have honor, you don't. You either take care of people you work with. I understand the military people getting their 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 coverage, but I want it crystal clear that the families are not left behind. Not good business for anybody. It's certainly not good business for me. You always watch people's backs. Your employees, whether they're gone or not, you watch their backs. And I can't, I can't, unless you can convince me that the families are taken care of, I can't accept this.
And I can't answer that without doing research. This is the first reading, so I can certainly bring it back by the second time.
I think this should be postponed until you can answer that.
This is only the first reading, so you're not going to vote tonight.
I just, I had a question, if I may, just. One, when this Guardsman is on deployment, that's an employee is on deployment, once they return, is there any?
There's language in there that says they can come right back onto the plan.
Right, there's no hiccups, there's no delay, there's no, they're just immediately back.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right.
No, Professor Kelly.
I have one.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see it now. Supervisor Kelly.
This is the first employee to have this happen?
Yep, so if you have questions at all between now and the next meeting, you're welcome to give me a call, otherwise I can also address them.
What I mean is like, so this hasn't been an issue? The entire time?
Yes, we had an employee who's currently gone and he elected to have.
I mean, this is the first one, right?
Nope, we've had several people, they just not didn't elect it because they took the military insurance and didn't. He understood that he would have been missing out on the HRA dollars. So he would, he was interested in, which I would too. If I had found that loophole, I would have probably wanted to do the same thing. But again, it's not required or or common.
Yes.
The insurance coverage is based on, for military is is now this goes back a few years, so I'm not current on this. I will get current by the end of the week. It's based on them going to military facilities as much as possible. Most people don't, most guards don't deploy for years at a time. It just doesn't happen, except during Afghanistan. This is the first World War Two, Korea and Afghanistan, where guards deployed for long periods of time. Some families were inconvenienced when their husbands deployed and they were not, the guards mostly, and they were not by military bases to go to military hospitals. They had to scramble for coverage. And I'm really concerned about us leaving people behind.
I will do the research on the families, but I can assure you that when you're in the guards, you do have to do a tour. And my, like I said, my son is gone right now doing one. And so I'll definitely do some research for you to make sure that you feel better.
It's about the families. Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions?
All right, so then the second agenda item is about the six new policies. So we put them in two different agenda items so that when you come forward for approval at the next meeting, you can approve them separately. There are six new policy suggestions. I'm going to briefly go through them. So the first one is because there's a new law, the PWFA, it's a new pregnancy law. And when there's a new law, it's always recommended that you also refer to it in your policy. Our, one of our law attorneys externally, outside of the county, gave us this language. So this is their recommendate, recommended language to put in our policy. There is really no change to how we currently treat employees who are pregnant. We are already doing all the things that are already listed in that, in that policy. Those, the next one, because whenever we try to bring policy forward, we try not to bring it all like once every meeting. Whenever we have the idea, I try to save it so that I'm not bringing laboriously to the board. So this is one that's kind of been on the list that we should probably have had in our policy manual for many years and just didn't add it. And it's basically just spelling out the reasonable accommodations for individuals with religious beliefs and practices. So this would be placed within the handbook right around where the ADA policy is. So we already have an accommodation for disabilities. This would be what the responsibility is of the county if somebody makes a religious accommodation request. The next one might generate some conversation, but there is a lot of use of artificial intelligence. There's ChatBT, there's. Copilot, that's the other one through Microsoft, and there's several other options out there. I mean, if you just go to your Google app on your phone and you ask it a question, the first thing that's on top is AI. So what we decided to do is to bring forward an AI policy. So at least we can start educating and informing our employees what is acceptable and not acceptable as it relates to work practices with AI. So you'll see when you kind of walk through it that there's some acceptable versus prohibited use. And so that is kind of where a lot of our conversation in DOA, I think quite a bit, even in the executive committee when we first brought this forward. So I would focus, I would say focus on this area if you're interested and if you have concerns or questions, definitely let me know. One of the things that we did talk about was number, letter six or number six there. Drafting employment related content, including disciplinary actions, hiring, firing or promotions, as long as no identity information is entered. The corrections or the changes up there were recommended during the executive committee. But when we first got a draft of this policy from another county, because we were researching off of the SHRM website and other counties, that was in a prohibited area. And we discussed and thought that that's a healthy things to do as long as you're not putting personal information in. If maybe you're looking for some trigger words or something, you have an employee who's worked with you for twenty years and you try to get creative of what, how to fill out a performance review, there might be some creative language out there. So we wanted that to be acceptable for them to do. Any questions on artificial intelligence policy at all?
Something you might want to just let people know, I think you put into these ChatBT's public knowledge.
Yep.
You know, so nothing can go out there that you're not willing to put in the newspaper, so.
That's in there, yep.
Actually worded that way.
Okay. The next one is job descriptions. This is kind of like the religious accommodations, there's a policy that we probably always should have had. There's really nothing new here, there's no new practice. This is exactly how we function now with our job descriptions, putting it clearly in writing. These are all the sections that are already part of our job description. The who changes the job description, that's already the practice. And then the approval, that's exactly what's happening now. So there's no change, it's just putting it in writing in policy. Children in the workplace, this is just another one that we don't have. We have a pets in the workplace policy. We didn't think to put put a child on the workplace policy. So discuss kind of what the, it doesn't say that children aren't allowed to come to work, it's just there's some parameters on what what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. And lastly, this one might also generate some discussion. In around this time last year, the board approved a resolution to allow PTO as a reward for MLK Day. On MLK Day, up here in this room and throughout the county, we invited all of the employees during the MLK, the in-service, the Training and Service Day, to learn more about the other positions within the courthouse. They had a little bingo card or a little card, and if they got, if they met Elv, those departments and went to all those booths, they got put into a drawing for a PTO day. So that idea, everybody loved it, it was a great, you know, positive thing. So we put this policy idea together to not have to bring the resolution each time, but to give some ability for the county administrator. I think it's up to twenty four hours, a maximum of eight hours per employee. So that's three incidences a year for something similar to that, to be able to do that. So that's the idea we came up with. It's hard to give gifts at the county. Gift cards, those types of things, you have to run them through taxes, you know, you have to run them through, it's burden on finance and it's just hard to do some of those things. So this is a way to do that. That's not money. Any other questions?
Me. I assume that's a typo, the twenty hours and twenty four in parentheses? Just a.
It is.
I was a trained observer. Thank you. That was, that was all I.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, Tony. Item nine, there are no county board chair appointments. Item ten, county administrator appointments. Item one, county administrator appointment, housing authority. Need to vote on it?
Need a motion in a second.
I'll entertain a motion. Approve. Housing authority.
First round of second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any discussion, question? We'll take the vote. Get the screen up. The appointment is approved. And item two is appointment for firing and facilitating library success ifless board member.
Lot seconds.
Give me a motion in a second to approve that appointment. Discussion? We will take the vote. Appointment is approved. Thank you. And. Add to agenda items for future consideration. Let us know.
I'll get a time where we can discuss some solutions. I've been aware that Chippewa County's education system ranked thirty to forty percentile in the state. That's going to dramatically impact businesses coming here, families staying here, and my area is getting older by the year. I don't think this, I'd like to discuss it as a board because a lot of people hear those different ideas of, I know we don't have anything to say over the education system, but eleventh and twelfth grade, we can, can we have some options?
Can you send me some ideas on what you'd like to see, maybe we can, we can try to get.
Well, that's me.
Send something in writing, we can't really discuss things here. Send me some of the things for, you know, because the item here is the agenda for future consideration, so we can't really discuss. But send it to me personally and ideas and we will try. And before we go, I'd just like to say this is, it's eight months now into your service and I'm impressed the way the board, we have a lot of new members that have come. And just in my observations, I'm impressed how you've all have finally settled in, you've learning, learning roles some. I'm extremely impressed at the questions we get. I've had numerous people come here, present, no matter where they're from, make comments afterward. Boy, they asked a lot of questions, but they were good questions. And that, that's a good thing, so I really appreciate that. And then also with the holidays coming up, I would just like to, I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and safe holiday. With that, we'll look for item twelve.
Erickson will make a motion to adjourn and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Lot seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, we will. Okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn, I will just say adjourned.
All right.
But I'm.